Welcome to the September 26, 2023 City Council Meeting. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present. And we'd like to start this evening with Vice Chair Ritchie leading the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Please stand and join me if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please join us in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you so much. Up first, does anyone have any acknowledgements?
Chair, I would love to just mention that this Saturday, we're going to have Lupek is having its seventh Ogden Hispanic Festival. And it's going to be at the amphitheater, starting at 2:00 PM from 2:00 to 8:00 PM. We have a lot of sponsors, but one of them is Ogden City Arts. So we'd like to give a special thanks to them. But we have a lot of them. And we have a group dance, our headline group, it's a group, a dance group coming from band coming from Colombia. So we hope everyone can make it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So excited about that.
Thank you.
Any other acknowledgements? Okay, great. Well, let's go on to our public hearing, the proposed street vacation of River Drive east of Washington Boulevard. And we'll welcome Joe Simpson, our Deputy Planning Manager. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you. It's good to be before you, counsel. Use the arrows. So this project we have before you, it's gone to the Planning Commission. This point, we're looking at a, it's a large project located just on the east side of Washington, near the Ogden River. Two portions that we'll be looking at is a vacation of River Drive, just a partial vacation, and then a rezone. So we'll hit the vacation first. Just want to make note that they'll also, we'll also be looking at some conveyance of property, but not in this mean that would be a future action that would occur. And also make note that, you know, that this project that we're considering would be independent from that action. And to move forward, right now, we're just looking at these two items. Just again, to give a little bit to the location, where it's at, I want to give a little bit of an overview, and then I'll go into the street vacation portion. But right now, we have multiple zone properties that consist of CP2 and R2 and O1 zoning. Proposal would be to go to a C3 CO, which would require a development agreement. It's just about two and a half acres what we're looking at under the current platted situation of the property. And was, most of the property now is vacant, was formerly had the Roy's RV and also the Baptist Church that was on the corner of 17th. This kind of shows the plat and the location of the property. The proposal would be looking at creating this cul-de-sac. Just to give a little bit of history, the developers, when they first started acquiring the private properties, this, the city did approach them and ask them to look at including some of the city properties or enhancing some of those city properties as part of that Should be noted that this project isn't dependent on those properties. The zoning that would be requested for this project would be independent of that and doesn't add any more, any more dwelling units. And really, the intent is to just add cohesiveness and enhance, enhancement of that area of transition. Also want to make note that there is, we wanted to look at potential growth for our riparian area and any improvements that we make with that, similar to what we've done to the west along the Ogden River. So the developer has hired an engineering company to evaluate that and determine areas that we need to stay away from for future improvements. They've also begun the process with UDOT for the city to acquire the small UDOT parcels that currently make up that parking lot in the trailhead area there. So just kind of go over it, this is, just gives kind of a visual overview of what is being proposed. One thing to make note is this is really a key location and iconic location. We'd see with the archway over Washington, I've seen that on a few postcards now and then, it's a very important location. And so this project is sensitive, that understands that, you know, this is iconic and something to look at that is conducive with the overall area. One thing to note is, you know, this, we really need to, it's important to look at this project as not just a intersection, but this actual node of connection that's occurring. If you have two modes of transportation that occur with the parkway trail and also with Washington Boulevard. So the intent of this project is to tie in with that. This shows what existing or recent structures that were on the properties. We have the Pioneer Days Building, the Roy's RV, and the Washington Heights Baptist Church. So the intent of this project is to create a transit-oriented mixed-use development. And the vacation is part of that. Just to show what we're, what this is accommodating, looking at two large residential buildings at five stories tall, consisting of 109 residential units, also including commercial building that would be part of the trailside cafe and office space. So the intent is to create this attractive trailhead and make this the focal point of the project and enhance that project. And I think this is one of the reasons the city, the main reason the city approached the developers is that property narrows down quite a bit due to the river arching there and the constraints as it sharpens down at Washington. If the private properties develop, there's really, it would be difficult to redevelop these properties. So including that as part of the project helps to make those amenities possible. Point out some of the features that we're looking at, you know, lots of patio space. This isn't just a box with rooms, you know, this has got a lot of amenities, looking at a lot of green space, plaza areas, cafe with walk-up window for trail users to use, expanded trailhead parking, and, you know, active plaza areas that all interconnect that. Just kind of show those amenities as well. And these, these amenities will provide access to other amenities in the area. And this connection for users, both with, we have the Lauren Far Park not too far away, we have downtown, which connects, you know, we got the Grand Avenue Promenade, we have the Adventure Park, there's all kinds of amenities that is able to be part of that. I think one of the challenges I've had when working on this project has been trying to really having a desire to have this be part of the overall downtown area. And it's just outside of it, but is really a key location. And I think that under this development agreement, the petitioner is really looking at trying to connect with what we've been doing with our downtown plans. Some other amenities to point out, just with the trailhead, providing some public seating areas, also lots of details have been provided on the landscaping, there's a lot of drought tolerant, drought resistant landscaping that would be tied with this project. And this area is kind of showing where that River Drive portion is in place. Want to point out too, with this, there's a good connection with this plaza, this creates this space between the commercial building that we see on the south side and where this, the new residential would occur, provides a good interactive space. And really, this whole outdoor amenity area is really kind of the highlight of the project. And then, of course, there's a lot of bike emphasis with this project, bike storage with the tenants for the space, but a lot of outdoor bike parking and a lot of outdoor spaces that way. Then the cafe will also provide roll-up garage doors that will interact with this open space and tie that, that commercial space with the open space as well. This gives a little bit of layout of the proposal with the commercial building and just how those spaces would be used. Again, the intent is to create a cafe on the lower level and then having an office area and patio areas on the upper level. This provides a view of the cafe from the trail. And this is a great view in looking at the vacation, in the trade for the street in this location, we get this connection of, that's pedestrian oriented rather than a car oriented type of connectivity. This also just kind of shows a better, a better street view of that connection and that plaza area. And it's, you know, incorporating all kinds of amenities with landscaping, seating, patio space. So there are complexities with this project to make aware of, you know, one of those being obtaining UDOT parcels that were, that are in this space, that process has begun. Also, you know, meeting funding obligations for the development. One thing that has been included that we'll discuss as part of the rezone is the development agreement of the project. It will allow those UDOT properties and city properties to be considered in the future as part of the conveyance process. So the first action we're looking at is, you know, this vacation of River Drive. And it's pretty simple. And basically, what we have is River Drive is not fully dedicated. You can kind of see where it comes off Washington, it just kind of loads into a parcel that's owned by the city. And talking to the city surveyor of how we would deal with that, where is the road and what are we considering for vacation, would really be just connecting those two points at the end of River Drive that are on the east end of River Drive, the dedicated platted portion. And so that's, that's what's be considered with this action of the street vacation, the remaining portions of the property would have to be considered as part of the conveyance process.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I think that you talked about this before in a different presentation, but are there any issues with access for emergency access or anything like that by vacating that?
No, absolutely not. In fact, day one of looking at this, we've had the fire marshal, city engineering, all the utility groups out. There, one of the contingencies as part of the vacation is there are utilities that are there, and we would want easements to remain intact. And that's one of the conditions that the Plan Commission recommended approval for the vacation, is that those easements remain intact through that plaza area so we can have future maintenance. Excellent question. Also want to look at how, that's a great segue into like how the traffic patterns would be changed for this area. Currently, you know, the existing pattern, we can see on the left, there's access, you know, off Washington directly. But in addition to that act, that road access, there are several access points that are in place that I know when I went to the site and just, there was a large group there leaving, someone's trying to turn on River Drive, someone's trying to pull out of the trail parking lot, and then someone's trying to pull out to the access further north. And that could be a little scary, having that many accesses on Washington. So this flow pattern would really kind of centralize and limit those number of access points for vehicles to really two off of Washington for the entire site. One would be for the trailside parking at the south end. And either would be into the parking lot.
Is that me? Is that you?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're okay.
It just was echoing all over. The other intent would also, at River Drive, there are homes that are along River Drive, and those would still have access through the development. There is a proposed roundabout that would be, not roundabout, but a cul-de-sac of all, then that would be dead, that would be owned by the city, a public road still, and that would remain in, it would be developed but remain under city ownership. There's also an alley that follows these purple lines you see through the middle of the project, and that would still provide access to the other properties as well. So again, you know, to emphasize, not an impact to, to any emergency response or eliminating access to other properties, just really creating more of a safer experience. I would note as well, this next slide slows, shows it pretty well, is you basically have the street on top of the trail. And as I've, as we've been to the site and we've done kind of some traffic counts and looking at it, this property is, this area is heavily used by trail users, predominantly by bicyclists and walkers. Having this buffer that would be created with the plaza instead of having a road right up against the trail really enhance the area and basically would be designing the site for how it's currently being used, not automotive, automotive focus, but rather towards the Just kind of point out some other things with the plaza and the connectivity. These areas are not going to be, not closed off to the public, they are public, open areas. Like I said, we'd have some easements for the trail and through the plaza that would allow both residents, trail users, and the public to be able to use and access this site. It's important to note as well that Washington Boulevard, really, this is its only access to the trail is this area. And this, this development and this change, to be able to do the street vacation will help to enhance that and make that a benefit for trail access. So just to sum up, we point out that River Drive is currently an underutilized road. It's not being used by vehicles, but has become more, is becoming more and has become more pedestrian oriented. We also find with the vacation improves the safety by reducing the number of access vehicles on Washington and also provides this buffering between the trail and the road. So with that, Plan Commission has recommended approval of the vacation.
I just have one more question, and then I'll go to my colleagues too. Do you mind going back to the map where it shows like the traffic pattern with the cul-de-sac?
Mm-hmm.
So you were saying on the right that there may be access to kind of the alleyway within the development. Will those residents be able to go out River Drive?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Like, could they exit that way? Because I'd be concerned about that additional traffic on that little residential street.
So this, and there has been some discussion of whether this would be gated or controlled. I know that's been ongoing with the fire marshal. The one thing is, is it does provide access to a property here, so that does have to have some connection in place. But yeah, it would be, it would be not as, it would be more limited, and currently it is used very limited anyways. The hope would be that people would want to go out and use the light here off of 17th and then be able to access Washington that way.
So you're saying that all the residents, the 200 new apartments would be exiting out River, that piece of River Drive?
They could, they could go that way, or more likely, they would come out here through to the north, directly onto 17th Street or off Washington. It depends on which way, if I was driving, it would be depending on which way I'm going on Washington, if I'm going to go north or south, so.
Yeah.
But if I lived here, I probably'd have a bike and just hop on that and go do.
No, I know. I guess my understanding was that it was going to be limited only to like that property that's there and then also emergency use?
Yeah.
I didn't have the understanding that that whole development could go out that way.
And like I said, that's been in discussion with, with the fire marshal, whether, and of course, also with the private property owner of how that could be regulated. It could be a combination gate that's put there and restrict that. But the fire marshal is, I don't think he's conclusively said whether they, he needs that open or not, so.
Because I know, I mean, I know that one reason I really appreciated how the developers worked with all of us, is that of course, you know, connecting with lots of council members and talking about the project, but also in, you know, interfacing with those residents. So yeah, I just don't know if that was clear. So I think that would be a shock to people that only have one or two cars coming every once in a while to suddenly have a lot of cars coming through their little residential street. Because that street also is not really, I mean, I've driven through there on accident quite a bit, like, oh, I turned too early, and it's not, I mean, it doesn't have big curbing or anything, right? It's kind of more like a, not a gravel road, but you know what I mean? It's just not as nice as the other roads around there.
Yeah, no, absolutely. But yeah, no, I, like I said, I think most would be probably directly going up to 17th Street through the parking lot rather than going further east and up and around. But I was mainly more referring to the homes that are there as well, they still would have the accessibility, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be something to resolve sooner rather than later, because I think those residents would have something to say about.
Sure. And I mean, that's definitely, again, the fire marshal was more indecisive about that. And, you know, if that's something that's a super concern, he probably'd weigh that in his decision, so.
I think even if there was just a gate there and it wasn't locked, then residents wouldn't be going through it, right?
Yeah.
That's the one to get out. I mean, that would be very inconvenient to have to get out and open a gate anyway. Anyway, other questions? Sorry, you don't mean to take us off track.
Chair, I have a couple of questions. So you've mentioned a couple of times that we're working through the UDOT property. And maybe I, I don't know, maybe I don't know quite how to ask this question, but if this, for some reason, this whole complex fails, this whole project fails, and we've now given the River Drive to this property owner, is there a way to have us revert back to having it be LR?
Absolutely, and that's through.
I don't see it anywhere in the.
And I'm struggling because I actually had designed to do the presentation of the rezoning first and then do the street vacation, but I see on your agenda, this was first. So I was like, it doesn't flow as well, so maybe that's why I'm struggling with it a little bit. But yeah, the next item that we'd be looking at is the rezone, but with that is a development agreement. And that development agreement is a contract, basically on that property of how it needs to be developed. There's contingency in that that relate to the UDOT properties and city properties that can be considered later, but right now, it stands on its own with the private properties. Though, we would like to see that plaza go in place, so we do have the street vacation before you know, so. But if, say, they don't develop it, there is a time period that is put on the contract where if there's no development occurs, that it reverts back.
But is there a protection that if they sell the land to someone else?
Yeah, the, the contract is tied with the land, it's recorded on title.
To the property owners?
What's that?
To the property owners.
To the property, yes. So if someone was going to buy that, that would come up in the title report of this, this restraint, this development agreement that's tied to the property. And that's how all our development agreements are doing.
Sorry, I am being dense. So we would, in that case, we would get the River Drive back?
Um, yes.
Under that development agreement, not under this action?
That's an interesting. We have a legal staff, Gary's looking at me like, Joe, I just love watching it fall on your face.
Which one comes first? Chicken or the egg?
There's several different avenues for, for resolution, but the point is, they can't give good title to a potential buyer because we're clouding the title with our contract.
Yeah.
And so any buyer would take it subject to our interests. And so which remedy we would pursue, and there's several in there, it kind of depends on what the situation is, but I think we're going to be adequately protected. And if you want, I'll review that development agreement with your concerns in mind.
That would be great. I just, I didn't, I'm looking at the, the street vacation one, and I don't see any revert.
Yeah. It's a good, good question and good point, so.
And I, I'm not saying that that's going to happen, I'm just saying, what if?
What if?
And that's how I'm feeling about the gate. Go ahead.
Thank you, Gary.
I'm trying to decide if I should ask my questions now or in the next item, because they're, they're kind of part and parts.
That's why I wanted to start, there's two parts.
And this one requires a public hearing, and the other one's just public input, so.
Yeah.
I'm feeling you, but I guess since we're making a decision on the street vacation relative to the development agreement and the rezone, I'll just ask it now.
It's, I mean, they're so interconnected, but procedure wise and by code, they're different actions and have to be reviewed differently. And so that's why, in my mind, I had the rezone, but first, but you know, this is how we're doing it, so it's great. We're flexible.
I guess for the, for the project as a whole, it's 100% rental units, correct?
That's correct.
We do have the petitioner here too, that we can invite for questions too.
Sure. Was there any discussion with city staff though, on, if there could be opportunity for some owner occupied?
That isn't something we have pursued too in depth. I just know with that and in previous discussions, not with just this project, but several others, the only option to have any owner occupation with the development would have to do is some type of condo, which is very difficult to do in the development world and can really put a lot of constraints. In fact, we're typically seeing our condos go away and being vacated due to the constraints that they have.
What about townhomes? Like a two-part project, one part townhomes for owner occupied, another part apartments?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the way I would see, it's, it's something that could be explored. I don't, it's not what has been presented, but I think the idea with, with the downtown is to try and increase that density. And it's not to say we don't have some townhomes, and some of that has been done in the River Band project. But yeah, it's not a discussion we've really had. But yeah, it's not a discussion we've really had with the developer. But like said, they are here and they could provide some insight on that if so wish. Thanks.
Just for everybody's note, we need to be a little bit closer to the mics for the Zoom as well because when we're farther away, they can't hear us.
Just along, along with the question, along with the question that was just asked, so I'm just curious, why aren't you having those conversations with the developer? About home, homeowner occupancy?
I mean, it, it has come up. We've had some brief discussion about it. I think just again, the main mode, the project we're looking at developing here, it would require a condominium, which would be difficult. The addition of townhomes would likely reduce the number of, it would reduce the number of units that could occur on the site, which would affect, you know, the design and the amenities that we're getting in, in the overall project, so. That would be my input, but again, the petitioners may have additional.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Joe before we invite the petitioner up? Okay, great. Well, we'd love to, I see that Joanna is here. If you'd like to step up to the mic. On your list as the petitioner, but also both of you. You can go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Thanks for your time tonight. My name is Joanna Drew Bay and this is my brother Paul Drew Bay.
Hello.
Should we address some of the questions that have come up?
If you'd like to, yeah, whatever you'd like to say.
Can we talk about the cul-de-sac or?
Yeah, so I think.
You have to get a little closer to the mic. I'm sorry, for people on Zoom, I guess they're having a hard time hearing us.
Sorry, everybody on Zoom. With the cul-de-sac, it was a huge part of the plan to create some buffer for the neighbors there. We know that without any inclusion of the Ogden City properties, when we bought this, all of our traffic was going to go onto River Drive. And it's really a better design to create that cul-de-sac and keep some traffic off. When we talked to the fire marshal, he wasn't sure what he wanted to do. But we're, our original plan was to have a fire truck gate there.
That's what I understood, yeah.
And I think if we, I mean, and we will, we would cover the cost of any installation of a gate, whether it's locked or whether it's just a traditional fire truck gate. But that, that point of the design is to create more privacy for those seven homes and not have these new homes going onto a very small street. You know, part of, one of the issues when we looked at this project is a lot of our traffic was going to go onto River Drive. The more we looked at River Drive, it didn't even meet standard street wits.
Actually, I, I believe that the fire marshal did say after that meeting with the neighbors that a locked gate would not be permitted because of emergency access. When we met with the neighbors and we talked about the cul-de-sac reducing traffic, I think it was 50/50 people saying, okay, I like that idea and other people saying, oh, I like having that direct access to Washington. And we were saying, well, depending on what the neighborhood wants, they could, they could go out that way or it could be locked. Now that we, I do think the fire marshal said it can't be locked. I do think there are traffic not calming measures, but like a gate that's not locked, signage, something there that could reduce that temptation. And I, I think for most people, it wouldn't be a great temptation because it's just going to be more direct to go out another way.
Agreed. Thank you, thanks so much for addressing that.
And it's also, it's 100 new apartments, not 200.
Oh, sorry.
And then, let's see.
So, yeah, the, just to let everybody kind of know some of the things that we look at when we're, you know, looking at a place to develop, you know, market rate apartments is definitely what we do. If we were going to do a first sale product, one, we wouldn't necessarily be able to use the D4 HUD loan that we'd be looking at. With that loan, it's heavily catered toward owning the property for at least 10 years. And there are increases in costs because of liability to the contractor, the architect and everybody else involved. You know, there are people out there that usually pick one or the other and this is just what our family's done for, for generations. So it is just more in our wheelhouse. It's, it doesn't mean that it's not something that we look at. If we were going to put townhomes on this project, it was a less than ideal site right up against some of the houses in the neighborhood. This created the most privacy, but really it's just a matter of, you know, streamlining it and making the numbers work. And, you know, I, I understand that not everybody is, you know, pro rental market, but we just see it as, you know, the market needs different types of housing. And, you know, my, my house backs up to apartments. I've lived in apartments, you know, all market rate for rent. And, you know, we, we think that it definitely has a place. And it's, it's not something that, you know, inherently means one thing or another. Are there any other questions?
Any other questions for the developer? Go ahead.
Just a comment, another question.
Well, yeah, whatever you'd like, sorry. Comment or question.
Well, thanks for your response. The city staff has mentioned your professionalism over and over, so thanks for that too. I'm not anti-rental either. I, I agree that we need all types of housing. Seems like when we say that, all we get is rentals. So where we're considering a, an incentive here, maybe not tonight, but eventually, that's where my mind is, is we are lacking in the ownership side and heavy on the rental side. And so when I consider an incentive, that's where my mind is, is incentive is intended to give us exactly what we need. In this case, I think they're arguing that we need the quality on the, with the plaza and the amenities. I would just personally would hope that we would get owner occupied townhomes if it can't be condominiumized with, with your design layout. But that's where my mindset was, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to echo also what Councilmember Nadolski just said. So I, but thank you for, for being here and thank you for working with the city for this project because I am not only not anti-rental, but not anti-development either. I appreciate developers that come to town and work on these good projects. But I feel that we are really, we just need more, more owner occupancy projects. And I understand if it's not your wheelhouse, as you said, and I respect that. But I'm just kind of sharing my personal thoughts. Thank you.
Anybody else? Gabriel, thank you so much. We'll go ahead and open it up for the public hearing, unless there's more discussion before public hearing. The public hearing, so you can step to the mic and speak on this topic and this topic alone. And if you're on the Zoom meeting, I don't know if I'm able to see who's on the Zoom meeting. I can't see it now, so. If you're on the Zoom meeting, you would raise your hand. Come on up.
My name is Al Jones. I'm a city curmudgeon. I, no disrespect here, in the vacation of this, anything and everything that is proposed can be done by the city without actually vacating and quit claiming this land over. You can stop traffic on this road. You can make it into a plaza. You can do the cul-de-sac, all of this thing without actually giving city-owned property to an individual. And personally, I think that, by myself, that townhomes are not, this is not a site for townhomes. And a quick aside, I don't know if this is this topic or the next one. But, and again, no offense, I understand, city are owned properties, condominiumized and everything is completely under the purview of the developer. I understand that there's some, you know, loan issues and everything and being able to develop it and everything. But these sorts of things are specifically, can be designed as condominiums, owner occupied, that sort of thing. And I, you know, we have to put our foot down somewhere on just more and more rentals. But on topic, vacating the ground, I personally think is a bad idea. I think the city can put in a plaza, they can maintain the plaza and have control over the entire River Street use and access without giving it to another individual. Keep it under city control because that is a very important part of a heavily used trail system of which I'm one who uses that trail. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the audience before we go online? Step on up, you guys could queue up if you'd like, so we don't have all the time in between. And we have one phone call, it looks like, online. And if you're on the phone on the Zoom meeting, I believe you hit, I'm gonna say the wrong thing, star six to raise your hand. If that doesn't work, do star nine, because I can't remember. Okay, go ahead.
Laura Lewis, Ogden City resident. I have a couple of questions. I agree with the gentleman before me. That property could be just as easily developed by Ogden City rather than giving away a, a public asset. I think that would be like, it is a very historical piece of property and I think it's something the city should hang on to and develop. My next question is, and I do agree with owner occupied housing. We need, I mean, we need less rentals and more owner, owner housing. Then my next question is about parking. I heard that there was only one, they were only required to provide one unit, parking space per unit. And correct me if I'm wrong, but most, most housing, houses, families or whatever, there's two cars. And so where is the overflow, potential overflow of those cars going? Because the street north, Eighteenth Street, is very narrow. There's not a lot of parking. There's a lot of parking on that street right now. And that means Washington Boulevard, is there going to be parking there? Are they going to take away trail parking? What is the plan to manage that? Because there's going to be more than one car in probably multiple units and that's all I have.
Thank you. Come on up.
Yeah, come on up. But I'm wondering, well, my friends were Roy and Philip Mendoza, who owned that property. I've known them for 50 years till he died and then Philip sold it. But I do know that the trail over there is wonderful. And if it's all packed in with a bunch of apartments and cars, when the hell would anybody go, heck, would anybody go on the trail? You know? And there's a lot of huge trees there that need to be saved. If they're going to do this, maybe, I don't know how they're going to do it. But, and then the, on Seventeenth Street is Taz Goodyear right there. And there might be a way for the people that live there to go out through that little alleyway by Taz Goodyear, you know? But I mean, why do we want such dense population? I mean, I tried to figure that out, but I haven't. I like being places where there's not a lot of people, as you can tell. But anyway, I think it's a good idea to develop it, but why do we need that much on there? And these guys are really nice, but.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the audience like to say anything? Step on up.
Hello, I'm Jenny Scovern and I am an Ogden resident. I agree, I'm a realtor, so I totally agree that we need owner occupied. But I also helped them purchase this property and it's been over a two-year process now where they've spent time and money and have done everything that the planning commission has recommended, everything that the city has asked of them to come up with it with the best balance of what they hope could make this a better trailhead, make a bigger pathway for people that are recreating in it. And they also have a right. I mean, I don't love all this, the multifamily going up either, but it's happening across the country. If I can find them a piece of land where it penciled, I'd love to list townhomes for them. But this is the development that they bought with the intent of doing multifamily. That's what their business model is. There's entrepreneurials here in the room and on the council. They also have a right to put in the thing that makes sense for them and that was the purpose of them buying the property. But I will say they are the Drew Bays, they are from Ogden, Mike Drew Bay. They do meaningful projects. They are not big house builders. I have never seen a couple put in so much thought and care, working with the city and the planning commission and trying to talk to residents. So I feel like they're probably, and I'm not speaking for them, but they're getting a little discouraged about doing business in Ogden here. Like it, it has been, they have changed plans, they've changed architectural plans, they have done every hoop that has been asked of them. And I, you know, I think at the end of the road, maybe they'll just, they'll just sell the property, the parcels we bought and, and move on and do business elsewhere because I'll tell you what, they do meaningful projects. The stuff they've done in Sacramento, they are not big box builders. I just think it would be a travesty. We want people to, they want to enhance this community. And everything that they have done, their principles have stood behind that every step of the way. So thank you. If I can find them, or owner occupied.
Chair, I'm sorry, what, what was her name?
Jenny Scovern.
Sorry.
Jenny Scovern.
Scovern, mm-hmm. Thank you. Step on up. Thank you.
Hi, DS Anderson, Ogden resident. I'm saving my eloquence for later. I just have a couple bullet point things I want to address. The city planning presentation was well put together. I like the art, I like what they've done, but there is some vagueness to it. Number one, the developer has initiated the process with UDOT. Why are we rezoning until we see that resolved with UDOT? That could change everything. Second, the future conveyance of properties, which properties are we talking about for future conveyance in that area that was never illustrated on the map? Another question was the roadway partially vacated. What does that mean, just partially, just that one part? Or is there plans to future vacation of further road on that parkway? We don't know. Third point, what the lovely developers say, what we do is market rate. Well, yeah, that's their job, is to acquire property from Ogden and make money off of it. Ogden, you could do this yourself, as Mr. Jones illustrated eloquently. And the young real estate lady that was just up talked about their meaningful properties that they've done in Sacramento. Do we see a track record? Do we see a history of that? How, how have those played out over time? And why are they here now? Because it's great real estate and we don't want to wreck it with poor planning. No offense to the planning commission, but poor thought out processes. There's a lot more work that we could do with that. I like the idea. Last point, riparian zone, it's not just the river and the banks. A healthy riparian zone requires space. There's not enough on it now with all the effort and work we've put into the restoration of the Ogden River over the decades. Let's not clutter it up some more. And we don't need more dogs because people don't handle their dogs correctly.
Oh, dogs, sorry. I didn't know you said dogs, okay, sorry.
Thank you, thank you for your.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the audience?
My name is Linda Sanchez and I did appreciate your questions, Councilmember White. I do have some questions as well. The parking was one of them because I didn't see that there would be enough parking. And with the zoning, we're getting rid of, of storage units. These people are going to need storage units to store stuff. Because if, maybe I didn't understand it correctly, a lot of those are studio apartments or smaller apartments. So I feel like we probably will need more storage so people can store their stuff because we all love stuff. The other concern that I have, that on the picture, I don't think it showed it very clearly, but there's a tattoo shop that is in between around that. It never showed a picture of how it's going to look. Five stories up and here's this tattoo shop that's down below. up, and here's this tattoo shop that's down below. I, I just question about that. And then, as far as vacating, I, I agree. I don't think we should vacate this property. Because we can, we can do this. Or at least put it out for a public bid, so that just one, more than just one person gets a chance for this, because heck, you might even make more money. But I still, I still don't, I wouldn't think it would be good to sell it. With that being said, let's see, there was something else that was. I don't remember.
That's okay.
So.
There'll be public input on the next item, so maybe you'll remember that.
All right. Hey, thank you. I appreciate it.
You bet. Anyone else here? Welcome.
Good evening, Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I am truly sorry that our city is failing having a developer take two years to get through the process. That's problematic. Because the minute a developer purchases a property, it's a race to certificate of occupancy, and they lose money every single day. And I'm going to say some things that are probably going to blow your mind. The Bicycle Cafe, love it. I've seen those models work. The renderings by Black Box are beautiful. And I think it's important for the public to realize that the conveyance is only 0.6 acres. And this particular developer did what developers are supposed to do, which is purchase their own property. And the fact that they're paying for this property, and they have really gone through and want to add a quality project. I mean, in, in, in theory, I support the project, but here's where I'm kind of blow your mind. This is where you're supposed to be using TIF. If you want to leverage for properties for purchase, you've got to give a little. And this is when you should be doing it, if there is a water connection, sewer connection. Waive their fees, fast track them through planning. There are things that we can do as a city to bargain with our 0.6 acres of conveyance, plus waiving some of these fees to get those units for purchase that you want. And since they're requesting a rezone, you can get really creative with that. Maybe change some of the requirements for the size of the apartments, for that they scale. Or let's go ahead and make them townhomes. And to the point about condos, HUD allows you condos. This is, I'd love to, I loved what Marsha White, excuse me, Councilwoman White said about the clawback. I have a client that's an attorney, and now everybody's, you know, it's always about like, worst case scenario, plan for it. And, and I really think that we need to make sure those clawbacks are in effect. And I really, the other piece that I've learned is operational agreements. Not to say that there's anything nefarious going on. These are great small developers, which I really like. And they're local, and they have an office here. I love that. But operational agreements can be drawn up outside, and all sorts of things can be hidden behind you. So I'm asking you to really protect Ogden. And as much as I want this developer to move forward and do their thing, I think that you should table it until there's more discussion. So what Ogden can bring to the table to help this developer to get some of those units. And HUD has single unit approval for condos. They must be occupied as soon as the project is built, then you can make them condos right after. Minimum of five units. So maybe that's something that you could put as a provision, if they move through their project, that a certain number will be condos. Anyway, I believe more discussion is needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here? Come on up.
Teresa Bramwell. I like this project. I'm excited about it. My family's business was right across the street from this, on Eighteenth and Washington, and I spent many days at Piccadilly Fish and Chips, which is what that building used to be, eating their English chips that were so delicious. And I would go play in the river, probably 1,000 days of my life I've spent on this property. And I'm excited to see it be something. I love it. I like the idea of it. But I, and I like the developers. I wish everything that I could do was in my wheelhouse. Because I've been in the circus, and that's not what I do. But I did it because I made money doing it. So not everything in life necessarily has to be in somebody's wheelhouse. And I think what's best for Ogden might be in conflict with what's best for the developer. And I think this is a perfect time, when the developer's coming to you saying, we want your street, we want you to change the zoning for us, we want all these things from Ogden City, we want to be in the perfect location next to the river, that Ogden can use some of its power and say, we want homes that can, or condos, they would have to be condos with what the developer has presented. But we want some of these units, these condos, to be owner occupied. Because we cannot continue to have a society that is functional, if we cannot employ our people and have our people be able to create equity in the residences that they're living in. You're going to cut out all the Realtors from being able to sell these properties if they're not condominiums. So you're going to have all your Realtors not being able to eat. You're going to have all the people that are living there that won't be gaining any equity in however many years that they rent an apartment. And I think this is Ogden's opportunity to say, we need this, it has to start somewhere. Every developer is going to come to you saying, we only want to build market rate apartments, because that's what makes developers rich. And every one of them is going to want the same thing from you. You have to start somewhere and say, this is what we need to have a functional society that continues into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the audience? Go ahead, please go ahead. Come on up.
Chair Corrika, members of the council, thank you. Thanks for taking a minute to take a look at this request. My name's Scott Mendoza, and I've had the absolute pleasure of working with Paul and Joanna and the rest of their team. Couple things I want to take just a second and say is, as far as the housing type. The zone that's in place today, the zone that's being requested, it lists this type of housing as a permitted use. It's listed, it's there, to me, that tells me that it's a preferred use. The city has taken previous policy steps and putting that type of use in place, because the city feels that it's preferred.
Do you mind speaking a little bit closer to the mic? They can't hear you online. Thank you.
Something else that I just wanted to say to you was that, or explain, is Paul and Joanna have worked very hard on this project. They've hired qualified professionals to look, in fact, river restoration, for example. The city has worked with river restoration before. The reason Paul and Joanna chose river restoration is because the city has worked with them, they have a very good relationship, and the city trusts them. Paul and Joanna hired them to study the river and look at the potential. And if the city were to choose to ever move forward with future river restoration, going east, east of Washington Boulevard, there would be plenty of room. And that study has been conducted. It's been found that, well, what River Restoration did was distinguish land from, that is more developable than other land. And so they've actually defined a line, that they say, from this line south is the line that we need to keep a hold of, the city. From that point south is the area that would be needed for future river restoration. As far as traffic, again, Paul and Joanna have hired a well-respected professional, traffic engineer. That's all been studied. What's been found is that what's going to happen, or the, the number of units that are in place, and the trips that will be generated, will not create an issue where traffic falls below an acceptable level. They grade these intersections, they show the number of trips. Trips are not going to increase to a point where it's unacceptable or where traffic begins to fail. There are enhancements that Paul and Joanna will work with UDOT on, on Seventeenth Street. They're going to enhance traffic safety, and it will be an improvement. Conceptually, the plan versus what's there today, it's amazing. From a planning perspective, this property owner is a, is an absolute dream. The rest of the listed uses.
Sorry, yeah, there's, the time's up, but thank you so much.
I respect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here? Thank you.
I think it's Travis Pate, sorry, Ogden resident. I think the dynamic that I keep seeing, and you said this topic and this topic, only the topic is road closure. The, it can be built without the road being closed. It can be built without the surrendering of the property. And, and so the dynamic that you've seen up and in around Weber State University, with, when, when Taylor Avenue was first closed, and Tyler Avenue was closed, and then, and Mount Ogden was not connected through, all these dynamics that we've seen with, with development of one's type, and so to speak, the state of Utah owning, and then Ogden City saying, well, we own up until the university, but then the university owns the entire road, once it's inside the campus. And so there's that, that dynamic that has, has caused the road closure aspect. So the road closure here, to me, is there's, the federal government has what's called a build and a no build. Here's what happens if we build it, here's what happens if we don't build it. The same dynamic with this. Leave the road alone, and then put traffic calming measures and other things, such as plazas and everything else. I think we have this thing called, oh, the Grant Avenue promenade. We improved our actually road, our road with pavement and bicycle offsets and all these other wonderful, tremendous things. But we didn't give it to the developers. We didn't give Grant Avenue to the developers, we still own it. And so this, the same aspects, the, the topic is ownership. Once it's gone, it's gone. We might have a reversion clause, but then we had to hire the lawyers, and we had to bring a different group in, because then it's a conflict of interest. And there's, and there's not something that says that's a, if it's an outright sale. It doesn't say they can't bring on other partners and other partners, and then slowly back out and become a silent partner, and they're gone. And we've had conversion of ownership without it going through the title process. And so the ownership of the road is critical, the access to the river is critical. And the traffic calming measures can be done with, again, without the dynamic of surrendering an actual road. And then also, the traffic engineer, did they study Pioneer Days? Did they study Hot Rock and Fort, when the American Dream Foundation used to do that, and the traffic patterns that were there? And then the actual access that UDOT, we already currently have on River Drive at Washington, is not, is not done. I mean, it's, it's already there. So do they have to readdress that? Because it's now a private road, it's now a private access. So I think to me, is, we can just keep the road. And then at a future point, once the development is, and then the traffic patterns prove differently, and the, maybe some of the other older neighbors die off that needed their access, emergency access, now we had to go clear to Seventeenth Street, over, back, back around a cul-de-sac that somebody may or may not have parked in. So we now can't turn the fire engine until we get a tow truck. And so the dynamic to me is easy access, keep the road, don't, don't sell it, develop it around.
Thank you. Any other comments here? Okay, we'll go online with Heath Sato.
Yeah, there.
There you go.
Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I'm actually generally in support of this project. I've looked at the designs, the layout of things. I'm not real thrilled with the 100% apartment plan, but otherwise, it seems pretty good. I've looked into the developers. I like that they are local, connected. I like that they actually bought the land they're going to be building on themselves, and have asked for a small amount of land. That said, if we are going to be giving away so much land, again, I would like to see some concession in regards to what we get back out of that. We're constantly told that, you know, we'll eventually get more property taxes and that sort of thing. And that, that's all fine and good, but I would like to see a stronger benefit to the community if we're going to give away land. But again, kudos to them for being local, a, a small enough developer that's going to, you know, they're small enough that they actually care about their individual project, project. They're not just doing 100 projects all around the city on land they've been given. So kudos to them for, for being a better, a better developer in that regard. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments online?
Chair, not seeing any other comments, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item. Second.
A motion by Base Chair Ritchie, and a second by Councilmember Hired to close the public hearing, on favor. Any opposed? Great. More discussion, or should we bring back up Joe to answer some questions, or the petitioner? I don't know who would like to answer some of the questions that were raised? You, do you want, do you want to? Sure. There's a few. I mean, I guess the one thing I do have a response about, but I just, you know, to be clear, right, they purchased the property they wanted to develop.
Yes.
And then we asked them to do, do this commercial property and the trailhead enhancement.
That's correct.
So they're not getting incentivized for billing the apartments, right? They're being incentivized to build the shop and the, to do that area too. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. No, and I think I was holding off, because a lot of this will be discussing in the next section, but.
Oh, okay, well.
But I, I'm happy to go into it. It's again.
I mean, I guess maybe clarify, why do we need to vacate the land? Maybe we should do that to start with.
Well, part of it is, you know, they, they're installing it, but also they want to have ownership of it, to maintain it, and to have a part of, be cohesive with the entire project. This would be something, I, I just know for a fact, if the city was to try and build this and maintain it, it would not, it would not be as nice as what's being proposed right now. So that.
And also, I mean, just to clarify that too, they could just build their apartment development, and just leave the old Pioneer Building there, and not take any of that land, and do all this other stuff.
Correct.
Right.
So, and if you do the analysis with the commercial billing, it really doesn't pencil on its own. It, and really needs, it, it basically is flat. There's, 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 the only benefit is it's an enhancement to this project, an enhancement to that public area. Now, I, I think it could be a very successful one, just with its location and how it functions. We haven't seen that in our city yet, but there are cities that have experienced that with this trailside cafe interaction, where someone, I mean, really, you have to get off the trail and go somewhere, you know, where this, you can have that convenience. It's, they're not going to have everything. And of course, we want people to kick off the trail now and then. But this becomes a, kind of a crowning gem, a center gem of access for the trail off of Washington, which is a prominent area, as we've heard. I, it's okay, I hit on a few things I kind of heard, and just kind of point out, some talked about the tree preservation. And there is, there is no plan to remove those trees along the trail, or any of that. In fact, they'd be looking at just maintaining those trims, so they're not too low, but also looking at adding trees and adding vegetation along the trail. So I want to make that clear. There's been a lot of talk about the density, and about ownership, and where would we want, why not consider townhomes? And I know we can get a little excited about apartments, just because we've seen so many come into the city. But I would argue, if you were to have apartments anywhere in the city, where they need to be located, be in downtown, where we need to have the density in the downtown. I, I point out often, when I went and did the APA conference in Seattle, and I was there for a week, and after about 6 o'clock, their whole downtown was dead. There was nothing going on. The shops all shut down, there's a few bars open, that's it. There's lots of communities around it. And talking to their planners there, one of the struggles they've had is they don't have a lot of downtown residents. So people work in the city, then they leave the city. And it's been a huge impact for them, and kind of was a testament to me, where if we can have people living here and having their whole life connected with the downtown, adds that vibrancy to our downtown area. So I would say, I pose that question, where would you? So I would say, I pose that question, where would you want to see density occur in the city? And to me, I would say it's in the downtown and that's best practices. As far as for the trail, I think there's been some confusion of, or not, not the, the trail, but the, the plaza and the road itself. And that's really what we're looking at this first step is what portion is being vacated? And it really is just that small portion off of Washington. There are no buildings proposed in that, there can't be because there are utilities there. And so I want to make it clear that that, that area would still be accessible to the public via easement. Also, the trail along the river would also be left public via easement. And we've worked closely with our Parks Department, the trails, to determine how much space is needed to get vehicles through there. And those easements have been looked at. And a lot of this will be considered as it goes, if, if the project's able to move forward, you know, through the subdivision and site plan process. So there is, this is really step one, is, is it okay to have this zone here and is it okay to vacate this portion of the road so we can tie that commercial project with the development and tie it all together? As far as for the Riperian area, there was some question about that. And again, I think that was hit on pretty clearly, that the same company that we hired to do all the restoration work to the west is the same company that was hired and the developer paid the bill for the city to get that benefit of determining the improvements in the space needed. So that isn't given away. We don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, so, so to speak.
Should we talk about the parking in the next thing?
Yep, the parking is my next one. So the parking requirement for this use, and again, a lot of this is reviewed as part of the site plan, but under the code itself, they need to have 1.3 parking stalls per unit. And there's actually a maximum that they can have in, in the development. And the idea behind that is, we don't want to create parking lots in our downtown. We want parking and we want those to be strategic and we have looked at that as far as for the downtown and looking at creating dedicated areas, parking garages, things of that nature. But we're really trying to increase the density and, and the value and the use of our property in our urban core of the city. So, yeah.
And is there any, I know in other developments, sometimes like each apartment is assigned a parking spot, is it going to be kind of like that or is it just open parking? Do you know?
I don't know.
Well, I can ask them in the next round, yeah. Thank you. Any, you have another one? Sorry, I may not have.
Well.
Looks like Councilmember Lopez has a question.
Okay. So I, I just would like more clarity and, and more transparency on the topic of homeowner occupancy, right? Because I, I hear, I, I, every time we ask about these, we always hear, what I hear is usually, right, or it's hard. But I don't hear definitive no's. I don't hear, there's, there's no way, nobody, right, no, nobody lands money for homeowner occupant condominiums of this type. I mean, I've never heard that definitively, I always heard people dancing around that answer. And I like to hear some definitive answers because I feel like someone here should know, there's got to be experts in, in the city, from the developers that should know and that can give us some straight answers.
Sure. So I guess anything is possible. You're like, is it possible? That's the question. It's possible, anything is possible, right?
Yeah.
Is it, and I know, I hate to dismiss the challenges that are involved with that, and I'm not an expert in this, so I, I could lean on others to, to weigh in that, but the challenge comes when making that investment and, and trying to market something and sell something. I just know the, the firsthand experience I've had with it is people trying to buy them and coming in the city and finding they can't get the financing they need to get into them just due to the liability associated with how a condominium works. And, and so I, I know you say, well, I hear the challenges, and yeah, there are challenges and it's because of the challenges you don't see them is, is the reason.
Okay.
And, I mean, I would argue we did the condominium in the Ben Lomond Hotel for, for a while, lots of problems with that. Eventually just had to be vacated and became apartments with that. So they couldn't get those occupied.
Okay.
Do you have a comment or question?
Yeah, and I, I don't, I am not an expert on, I think you said you were using HUD D4 financing or something like that. I'm, I have not, I, I don't want to say this, I have not heard that program to be owner occupied either. I, I've always heard it to be rental units, but is that?
Oh, yeah. Maybe we should have a conversation offline because we can't.
Yeah, I just, I, I think that there's reasons why, that they can't be occupied using that type of financing, but I don't know.
Well, yeah, so, no.
But, but, but I also want to make one real other quick comment that we're all missing and we haven't even talked about the second side.
Right.
Is that they could do whatever they want right now with the zoning that they have in place. So we've just asked them to do more, so I just.
Yeah, well, and I don't mean to cut you off, Councilmember Lopez, but I was thinking, maybe we could have someone come to the council during a work session that isn't associated with any particular project. So I think that's sometimes the challenge too, is that sometimes we have the developers in front of us which do have an interest of some kind, you know, obviously, and then other people have an interest. So we need someone that's kind of a neutral person to come and talk with us about the condominiumized idea. Can we add that, Janine, to maybe a future work session, some kind of outside expert that could talk to us about that? Because that's my understanding too, is there have, there are some that have occurred, but there's such a heavy investment like from a not-for-profit or from a foundation or another entity that has sort of those kinds of investments that can deal with some of those ramifications. But I am definitely not an expert either, so I'd love to know more about that too.
Yeah.
And I did, I just wanted to support or, you know, just comment on what Marsha was saying, is that, you know, this isn't, I know there's a lot of discussion about owner occupancy and for rent, but it really seems to be clouding the whole issue because if they want to do it, that's what they can do, so.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was just going to also make one quick comment, looking at Google Earth, that it's really a road to nowhere. I mean, it.
Oh, oh, no, I know, I've used that road by accident many times. I mean, I kind of like it because it's so quiet, but it's not actually, if you've driven on it, it's not up to the standards of other roads in the area.
Yeah, I just was.
It's just a huge concrete mess. Go ahead.
Thanks. Good, good discussion, actually. I think, I think in this discussion, everybody's right. And I think that the.
Yes, because they have these questions.
Like the two-year timeline is really unfortunate. And so here we are on the, literally the final seconds of the two-year journey and we're having all these questions. Because this is, we haven't been there the whole two years. I, I didn't get an invitation to, to talk to anybody about the project, if others did, I don't think. Oh, I don't remember that.
Yeah.
Oh, that, that was a long time ago.
Yeah, it was about a year ago when we went over and met and saw the project. And when I met with them the first time, they were just talking about their apartment development. And then the city said, hey, we've got this other idea, why don't you do this? And then they went back to the drawing board and did all this.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the, the, the point where I, I feel so divided now too, is you've got every right to do what, whatever you want with the zoning that you have. And then the incentive, and I was going to ask Joe, what's the value of the land that we're going to vacate? Do you know?
I don't know if that street has been appraised.
And the street is not even a street. I'm okay with the closure part.
So I think just important to note is what we're looking at now is just a street vacation of just a little teeny piece. It's just that, because the rest is part of a parcel. It's paved, but it's part of a parcel. It's only one little piece and technically that would be split in half in the vacation process. So it's, it's very, very small.
All right, thank you.
It's complicated.
It is, and it's.
Go ahead.
Sorry. It's just, I think one, at some point, when we achieve alignment with our general plan amendments, there are going to be a massive change. What we want our use of incentives to be and for when we have RDA properties involved and so on, and what our goals ought to be, I think that'll make these kinds of projects and these considerations a lot easier. But I appreciate the discussion, it helped me discern what is and what isn't for tonight.
Would you like to make comment, please?
The dedicated portion of River Drive that we are requesting to vacate is, this is very small, but it's 4,281 or 91 square feet. So if we multiply that by $20 a square foot, which is a pretty generous evaluation and a normal, it's what we've had vacant land appraised at. It's, can you do that math? Because I'm too nervous to multiply 20 times 4,000.
So I think we've got 80, a little over 80,000.
But there is a high-pressure gas line underneath that land down the center, so there's a required 30-foot easement. The, the land is 40 feet wide. So there is a 30-foot easement. You can't build structures on that 30 feet. You can only put concrete or pavers or asphalt.
Thank you so much. Well, and then one suggestion was that we could table this item until after the next item, if you all would like to do that, if you're worried about considering this first.
Chair, can I?
Please.
Chime in a little bit? I'm, I'm concerned that we've got a, a developer that, that we all pretty well agree that we like. They're, they're very, they work with us well, they have upped their game at our request. They are willing to put the bill for the development of this property that currently is, you know, for a quasi-public space. We've hung them up, you know, on for a long time. I think we want to encourage developers like this and not discourage them. I'm, I'm concerned that we're trying to put more things on them to get them to, if, if I were them, I, that's what, that's what I'm trying to do, is put the shoe on the other foot. I'm not sure I would continue. I think I'd say, oh, well, I'm just going to develop my own property, you guys are on your own. And then we're left with, yeah, we've got some, some land, but who are you going to sell it to and what are you going to do with it? Or you develop it yourself at whatever cost that is and maintain it forever. I just don't see how that pencils for the city. So I, I think we ought to, we ought to thank them for their patience and I, I, I get the, the rental versus ownership, but that is, that's handled differently. I, I don't think you pick a developer and say, okay, you're the first, we're going to start hitting people hard because we want ownership properties. I, I think we do that with our land use, like we're talking about with the change in the M1, M2. You, you do, you do that with what do you, what do you allow? How do you allow it? And that kind of thing, and that, that, that's a different discussion.
Agreed.
So we, we can't have that with these guys on this development. It just doesn't work.
Well, and I agree that with Angel's point around, if, if we're going to ask a private developer to do this on their very own land, I would suggest we should do it first on the land that we own, that we're asking developers to develop. So not these folks.
Yeah.
This project and that, and to me, and I know I'm always this way, I mean, if not high-density somewhere, like Joe said, this is the absolute correct place for this.
Absolutely. And that was the one thing I was going to put out too.
Yeah, we have townhomes across the street that are for sale, basically. I mean, it's a really great mixed-use space. I think that that trailhead will be amazing. Right now, when you go over there, I mean, it's beautiful, the river is so wonderful and those houses are beautiful and the trees are wonderful. But then there's this huge vast expanse of concrete, you know, that's basically just heating up the whole area, right? So this to me is the perfect development. The developer has worked with us the best they can, I mean, probably more than they have in any other project.
I don't think they've pushed back much. I think they've been really good.
No, so I agree completely. And I do, I love all these questions, I think these are all definitely things we need to consider and discuss. But I have been talking to them for over a year when we went and saw the project before, so, yeah, that's my.
One other, one other thing is, is it was brought up that we ought to be using TIF for a thing like this. I think we're getting the benefits of it without having to do it on this.
True, on this one.
So anyway, just wanted to throw it out.
May I, Chair?
Please.
I, I agree with you and I agree with Councilmember Hayer too. I don't think this is the developer's fault in any way, but I feel like we have probably failed as a council, as a council body, not to be more proactive and forceful to look at possibilities for homeowner occupancy housing for our low-income residents. And so if there's a point to be, if there's a blame to be put on, would be on, on, on me, on us. And, and, you know, it is what it is. I, I think, I think everybody's right, it's not their fault, right? They've, they followed our processes and they followed the guidelines and they've done everything they had to do. So I don't have much time left on this, on this, on this council, but maybe I'll come back as a resident, maybe you'll, maybe, maybe, maybe you'll be hearing from me from there, right? But I, I just, I'm just, this makes me really, really sad. Again, we've had this conversation before and, and I, I really mean it. I'm very sad when I think about my kids and people that want to live in Ogden that can't. People that want to own a piece of property in Ogden and, and no longer can't do it. And I know this is happening everywhere in the country. I know this is not, we're not unique to it, but maybe we should do a little more.
I agree. You know, you made me think we should actually invite Steve Waldrop and the Rocky Mountain Home Fund, because they are kind of minimizing a, a property in Salt Lake. And they'd be able to tell us how and why that can work in that situation because they have the fund and the willingness to do that because they also care about people gaining equity in their property and are willing to think outside the box and use their funding that way too. So I think that would be a good person to have.
I, I think you kind of nailed it on the head, but what we got to do is get to a point where we've got, we know where these things can happen, the things that we're asking for, for owner-occupied, and that, and so that when we get in these projects, we don't get two years down the road and, and then realize, wait, what about this? And then when we have rentals that are achieving the, the quality and the level of amenities and so on, we're not just taking them project by project and saying, well, that is what it is. Then we can point to where we are getting the product that we want, and that's more of a plan and it's a lot more proactive. And I loved your idea of bringing in a neutral third party. I have some recommendations we can make for that too.
Yeah.
Then I think that would be the start of where we can get to a point where we can put those policies into place, allow partners like we have tonight to do the kind of work that is already zoned and where it should be, and then we've got other partners that can do what we need otherwise. Then I'd feel a lot more comfortable when I know what we're getting and where and all that, and so.
Yeah.
So thank you for your patience. I know it's been two years, but we needed an extra two hours.
Gets everybody up.
To get, to, to get caught up. I did, anyway.
Any other comments or questions?
I've been talking about the land that we own, we should be putting single-family homes on for quite some time, so I just want.
But I mean, in a condominium, you know, if we're going to do it, then.
But there's a lot of people exploring this kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, for sure.
I sent you some information the other day.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
Chair, you ready for a motion?
Ready.
Chair, I would propose then that we adopt ordinance 2023-52.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hayer, a second by Vice Chair Ritchie. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Chair Traburka?
Aye, and that passes, thank you.
Chair, can I just make a comment?
Please.
I know Gary stepped out and is now stepping back in, but can we make sure that if some, there is a revisionary clause or would it, however that would look, but I'm sure it's fine. The one time you step out.
Yeah, Gary, I don't know if you heard that, she just. She just, it did pass, but we do want to make sure that you review it with that issue in mind. Nobody can hear you on Zoom on your way over there. He has to wear a pair.
Oh, you didn't go have pizza? Okay.
I've been reviewing that again while you all have been talking. There's several, there's several provisions that protect the city. The whole development agreement runs with the land, which means that it's a recorded document and it protects it against these buyers and all other property owners in the future. Everybody's gonna be subject to it. There's several different provisions that give the city easements on the, on the trail, the trailhead parking area, all that sort of thing. There's plenty of protection regarding the intended uses. And all those easements will be in the final plat, which is also subject to this agreement. So I think, I think it's gonna be just fine.
Thank you. Okay, well, Joe, I guess you're back up again. Joe Simpson, our Deputy Planning Manager. Reports from the Planning Commission proposed rezone at 1720 to 1834 Washington Boulevard from CP2, R2, and O2 to C3/CO. Let's have fun just to say all those letters.
I mean, we could show these pictures again and look at it, but yeah, this is the same property, same stuff, awesome, you know, plaza, bikeways, cafe. I was gonna point out also, one thing to make mention is vacating the street will tie this property together. Also, it would eliminate, it would help with the setbacks because if there's a road there, a property line there, that building actually need to be shifted away a little bit. So that's also another reason for that vacation, just to make ad for the record. But I want to go past the first action and go to the second. I put them all on the same, same thing. So, second action, rezone from CP2, R2, and O1 to a C3/CO. And then the CO means that this is gonna have a development agreement, which we've talked about, would be recorded on the property. So we look at the situation and the status of the property, looking at, is this zone appropriate? Again, I would talk about the location, this node, and the proximity to Washington, one of our most major commercial corridors and what we're accomplishing with the downtown. This is really, I could say, it's kind of like the transition area from the neighborhood to the downtown. And as part of that transition is incorporating a lot of open space. Hence, when the developer had approached the city, our recommendation was not just to rezone, but to do it with a conditional overlay so that we could have those above and beyond requirements with the, with the development agreement. One question was defining those boundaries. So with the information we've been able to collect with doing the Riparian area and looking at the project, we've been able to define that zone boundary, that zone description. This shows that here. One of the things we lean on as well is when making these decisions is what does the community plan talk about? And one of the key things that it mentions is having that higher density being located on the most major street, Washington Boulevard, and having that close to the urban core. I don't think you can get any closer to the urban core than this property. And so with that, we see there's a lot of support for having this type of development, this kind of density occur in this location through the community plan. Again, I want to emphasize too, and I'll jump back. You know, all of these requirements and these designs that you look at and there's, we've received details of, you know, the landscaping just being all drought tolerant. These designs, these colors, these placements, all of that would be part of this development agreement and has been included is exhibits as part of that. So with this rezoning, when we feel it supports having a higher density of C3, it's, we feel it's doing it the right way by applying the development agreement and having these conditions followed under the exhibits of the development agreement occurring. And also in the, is it's difficult to develop commercial. This time, we really don't see a lot of commercial development occurring just with how things have happened with COVID and, you know, markets have changed. People are purchasing things more online. It's difficult to get some of those commercial businesses running. And having this one right on the trail, that's, that's an extra bonus. So if I was to say, what are we getting out of this? I mean, the city wouldn't build that. And I don't think anybody could on their own either. So with some of the incentive, you know, we're able to get a lot better design, better amenity space. And it's, it's like you say, we kind of keep, have our cake and eat it, too, where we, we have, still have rights for the public to use it as it is now, just under an easement rather than land ownership. So wanted to kind of touch on that. Again, just kind of point out, and I think we've hit on that hard, what we have now and what we've seen occurring on the, on the property. This is a heavily used trail. Every time I've been there, there's been so many people on the trail, far more than vehicles. But it's, it's kind of sad because it is a sea of pavement out there. And you have all those issues with that heat island effect and things of that nature. And we feel there's been a lot of careful design that has gone into this project. I would echo as well with Mr. Mendoza that it's been really good to work with these developers. I've done many, many multifamily projects and many, I've done many projects for the city in the 16 years I've been here. And I don't think I've worked with anyone that has been as straightforward and willing to do as many challenges as we've, we've thrown at them and to present such a really well-thought-out, detailed-oriented project. And really, this is preliminary, you know? This is, this is not even into the site plan review, but I think we're getting a lot of that. So just to emphasize, is it in line with the general plan? It is. We feel that it, it provides a product that's gonna exceed the standards of the zoning. And so that's, that's the benefit. It ties well with the River Parkway and Ogden River. Enhancing that trail provides a good connection and transition between the downtown and the neighborhood. And we do have a defined zoning boundary. And these are policies we look at when we consider this. Well, with that, the Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Joe?
Yeah, comment. I want to bring up owner occupied, no, I'm just kidding.
Let's do it.
Joe, you really should have presented this first, then the.
Yeah, that was kind of how I planned it. It changed it.
A comment, I was glad I was reminded about the meeting we had at my office because it was so, we talked so much about the river. That's, but I also wanted to thank you because the comments that I provided that day, you guys took into consideration. And Hired River Restoration made sure that the Riparian area was addressed, the cross-sectional geometry and cross-sectional area to convey flows and so on. So I just want to make the comment, thank you for reminding me of that. And it seems like way longer than two years ago that that happened.
It's been a long going.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I think we did a lot. Okay, well, we're willing to take some public input on this item. If anybody would like to come up and speak, state your name for the record and you have three minutes to speak. And if you're on the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand and then you'll be able to speak when we let you know. Go ahead.
My name is Al Jones, City Curmudgeon. My opposition, I just wanted to be clear, my opposition prior, I feel bad because I feel I led the prior discussion down the wrong road. We were supposed to be talking purely about the road of which that I was opposed to. However, we have since given them the road. I am completely for this project.
I love it.
I think that these guys have probably been drugged through the bureaucratic maze and nightmare of idiocy. And I would like to urge the council to vote yes on this zoning rechange and let these fellows and young lady get at it.
Thank you. Well, and we don't see it as a curmudgeon, so we appreciate your feedback. Let's take any old feedback.
Hi again, Teresa Bramwell. I just wanted to say that I really do support this and I support you. And after I heard how much time and effort you've put into this, I kind of feel sorry for you. So I appreciate that there are people that are willing to build in Ogden and, and create awesome spaces for the public. The one thing I would add is that I would love to see a restaurant with some outdoor seating and places to either park or park a bike. And I'm, I'm excited to see this built. Thank you.
Thank you. Love it. Welcome back.
Hi, Travis Pete, friend of the curmudgeons, but I actually, primarily the dynamic that I see is we, we've had mock trials in high school. You need to be a mock developer and come in here and see how browbeat they get and how, and then how much welcoming and all the different dynamics. To me, it's just, it's an interesting thing, having even been through something this recent, this week recently myself at the help desk and like, whoa, whoa, just times out, just ask the next person up. If you can't provide the answer, it's okay to say no. And I think that's the dynamic with this. It was okay to say no, we're not selling you the road or vacating the road, but please develop and here's the rest of this property and here's, and then the development agreement. My concern would be, once the parking is exceeded by the residents, that they literally, just the opposite of Weaver State where it's just residents can only park on the street, that there's no residential parking from this development onto River Drive because it needs to be open for the public. It needs to be open for individuals that aren't just gonna be, oh, we didn't, we got away with no parking. So we're gonna just park our two and a half cars that we have instead of the one car that we're allowed. And so those, that accommodation needs to possibly be in the development agreement that just says, no, on-street parking for any other than your one car because the bus runs down there, the free trolley's not too far. I mean, if we're, if we're conceding to the state law that says, hey, encourage development by reducing parking restrictions, well, we didn't reduce the cars. And so that's the dynamic, the whole junction and all renovating the parking cars. So we have place for people to be. And if we're telling the project, that we're telling the public that is so used to this aspect and access and parking and we're saying, no, don't, because we've just given it away free because we didn't ask nor plan for additional development. People in New York pay for parking all the time. And, and so there's, to me, like I said, no development parking from on there and it should be in the rental agreement, that they will not park or they will be subject to being towed because that's, that's a protection for the neighborhood. You want to ask about impact, drive up the 900 block of Capitol Street behind the state office at Academy Square. And none of those houses were ever built with driveways. So where are they gonna park? Technically, both sides. Look at the little weird Eccles Avenue between, I think it's 21st and 22nd. It's now a one-way because of that dynamic. And so I think the protections need to be, now that we've encouraged them to say, hey, come on, be good neighbors and do this development, that they, they literally honor that in their rental contract that they, those individuals do not park on the residential streets.
Thank you. Any other comments here? Come on up.
Yes, Anderson, citizen of Ogden. One quick thing, the city would have the responsibility, I presume, for where that, the transportation hub for the bus, the UTA Transit Authority. Is that, did I miss that in the planning? Is there a bus stop area? Because it's that transition hub from the residential to the downtown to the mixed use. Where will, where will the bus go for that really cool thing that we're building? Where will we have a bus stop for that region? Something for you guys to think about.
Thank you. Come on up. You can race. No, I'm kidding.
Hello, Linda Sanchez. So I actually am very happy to see.
I don't know, you might have to put the mic a little closer. I'm sorry, thank you.
I am very happy to see a developer other than Fisher. So I appreciate that they're local and they are hardworking and that they do take public comment and your guys' comments. I still am kind of concerned about the parking. And in the pictures, they look beautiful. So I, I just hope everything goes well. And I do want to say, though, it does kind of have me a little concerned because have we all forgotten that right in that area, we just tore down a couple of hotels and motels with small amount of living space. And we, I'm not saying that we just need to be careful because there was a problem there and that's what we had to do was end up tearing it down. And so it would be nice to see, like everyone else says, maybe family, like a little bigger apart or townhomes or family where people are, have owner occupancy. And I understand that that's a problem, but that is a concern that we might get ourselves back into a situation that we just had, that we just tore down. And then just not for this particular thing, but just for the council themselves, when is high density gonna be enough? Like, at what point? Because I go down and we don't even have some high density done and we're building more and more and more. And I just happened to go down a place that I don't normally travel and there's more. So I just want to ask the question, when is enough enough? And where are we supposed to put those children if we don't plan for children? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. What does a third of a car look like? Oh, Laura Lewis, Laura Lewis, what does, what does a third of a car look like? I mean, how can you plan for that? And we're gonna have people fighting over that other two-thirds who gets to park their car. I mean, you gotta be realistic, either say one or two cars. So that isn't fair.
Thank you. Come on up.
Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I really appreciate the discussion that, that happened here and I, and I really appreciate that y'all seem to be echoing the concern that we have from a lot of citizens that we don't have enough owner occupied. And, well, it's absolutely tragic it's taken you this long. I look at this as a learning opportunity because, and hopefully because this developer is so amenable and has been so responsive that maybe they would be responsive again to talk about those meetings that you were with, looking at other people and looking at up possible options that makes it work for them. Because this doesn't work unless the developer makes money. It's a business. And so while I love the cafe part and the essential part of activating the walkway, that apartment or condo or living spaces, those need to be there for the developer to have the project pencil. And so one of the things that we heard with the two years is that we have a customer service problem. We should be creating value by removing an obstacle, which is a limitation for the customer, and that is people developing living spaces. So I'd encourage you to continue to have conversations and look at this as a case study. Well, why did it take two years? Where could we improve? How can we make this better for the next people that come through? And then continuing to have that conversation with them of what about these different models that we're looking at? What could we as a city give you to go that extra mile? To have it be a little more work, but get a percentage of condos or townhomes or whatever, some sort of for purchase model? They seem to have such goodwill and have really gone above and beyond taking your recommendations. So I would encourage. So I would encourage you to ask them to come to the table one more time to continue to have the conversation because while this does need to be approved and I fully support it, it's a good-looking project, we we need to balance, how can we do better so that this doesn't happen for other developers? And how can we participate to help them come over the line to meet some of what we need as far as housing for purchase, whatever that may look like? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here? I'm not seeing any hands online. I think we can go ahead and if there's any additional questions or comments anybody has.
I just just looked up page 22 of the presentation, there's bus stops right on both northbound and southbound right next to the property. And I think the cafe does have outdoor seating from the pictures, it looked like they had some of that and plenty of bike storage areas, so.
And I'm voting for a sandwich shop part of that, too.
Or maybe tacos.
Chair, I I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready to have it.
I don't see any other discussion.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2023-51. Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Hare, a second from Vice Chair Ritchie to adopt proposed ordinance 2023-51. This is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Chair Trabberka?
Aye, and that passes. Thank you again so much for all of your input, everyone. We really do appreciate everything that you had to say. And thank you to the developers for their patience and time. And I'm so excited about this project. I can't wait to see how it goes, for sure. Okay, up next we have unfinished business, the proposed Union Station Campus Master Plan Development Framework. That's a very long title, by the way. And we'll welcome, is Brandon here? I don't know if I've seen him.
Yeah.
Oh, is he back there?
He's behind the pole.
Okay. Oh, sorry, I was looking for the taller, but you're welcomed. Come on up, Brandon Cooper.
I'm the I'm the preparatory Brandon.
I'm sorry, we have so many Brandon's, it's like a Brandon party, but go ahead.
I think I think he has more hair than me, actually.
I'm not lucky. I'm not going to make a comment on your appearance.
I'll just take a minute to give you a little bit of context. I believe we're recommending to extend this item on the agenda. But in doing so, let me allow me to just briefly go over some of the context and the history as to why we would make that recommendation tonight. So we're talking about the Union Station Campus Master Plan Development Framework. And just in and of itself, that name is fairly confusing. And I think it's led to some confusion.
For me, definitely.
To date, yeah. So the framework plan is not a master plan, was never intended to be a master plan and is not intended to be codified as our land use policy. The framework plan was created as the very initial document out of the Make Ogden Plan that was adopted formally. It was the first plan that came out of that plan. And it was meant to be some guardrails for future development of the Union Station Campus. If you recall, we went through a number of meetings that talked about the process in which we would undertake and the objective that we were seeking. And so the framework plan was, A, used to help the redevelopment agency and UTA procure a developer. That document was attached to the RFQ solicitation and it was the underlying document in which we gauged the qualifications and the proposals of the respondents in that RFQ process. And then from there, it was meant to be used as a guiding document as that selected developer and the stakeholders, UTA and RDA, were to embark on a master planning process, which would then conclude with a master plan that could then either be adopted and incorporated into land use policy. During that time, we did do some downtown zoning revisions and in that in that process, some of the language that was law, our zoning language, looked to a master plan to be the defining regulations for the CMU zone. And so we felt like that because there's certain things in the framework plan that that might be usable. But it's just been a bit too confusing, I think. And so we would propose to extend this until such time that we can come back with some clarity.
Thank you so much for that explanation. That's kind of the way I understood it, too.
Yep.
A little confusing. Any questions from anybody from Brandon? Great, so I think our recommendation is to extend this item. Would anybody like to make that motion?
Chair, I would make that motion that we extend the Union Station Campus Master Plan Development Framework discussion.
That's a lot of words. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Hare, a second by Councilmember Nadolski to extend this item. This is a, would it be a voice vote? It's a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's been extended. Great, up next we have public comments.
Chair, will you just make sure that I'm sure there's a lot of people in here that may just, will you make sure that it's not a timeframe or anything like that?
Oh, extending? Yeah, it just means that it's till till later. There's not a, yeah, there's not a specific date. It'll be on the agenda. Okay, oh, just one second.
Just say, per your rules, some of them from the council office will come back with an estimated timeline about how we'll get through this and then and we'll and then so you have at least some process to follow.
Awesome. So this is a time for public comment on any item, just one second, Teresa. You have three minutes to speak and you state.
Okay, all right. I was just one.
Please stop talking for a second.
Teresa Holmes, Ogden resident.
Can you just stop talking for just one moment? I haven't told everybody what they're supposed to do just yet. I know, you know what it is already, but some people might be new.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, public comments, this is an opportunity to address the council about any concern or idea, and you have three minutes to speak and you state your name for the record. You can step to the podium to speak, or if you're online on the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand. Go ahead now, so sorry about that.
Okay, you know, the new buildings they intend to build, I'm wondering how many cars the museum is going to hold. Someone was trying to tell me it was only going to hold three of the Browning cars when we have nine and then there's two on loan. So it's got to be large enough to hold everything. And I'm just wondering if it's going to be large enough for all of our railroad equipment or should we keep most of it in the station? Because a lot of my friends went out and got a lot of this equipment. They went out to rail yards that were getting melted down and they got a lot of it. Bob Geyer and a few others, they did a lot of work getting this in there. And so, you know, even the telephone, the telegraph poles in there are from Promontory Point, you know, I mean, there's a lot of things in there that people don't even know about. Our water pipes disappeared. We had a original railroad rail from the Transcontinental that was in there. I don't, I just keep seeing things missing and I'm not sure anybody's going to know what they are down the road. So, you know, I was just wondering if Brandon knows how large it's going to be. Because, I mean, everything's still on the drawing table and I guess we've got to make the best of it. But all the Browning cars, all the guns, do you guys realize that that is Ogden's gold? If we didn't have those collections, Ogden wouldn't be worth crap, you know? I mean, this is this is big deal stuff. We are the Utah State Railroad Museum and we're not going to cheapen it up, you know? I mean, it's still got to be good. And frankly, people come to town to see trains, they're not coming to say, oh, where's your high-end retail at? I got to buy something, you know? But, I mean, I send them to the mall for that and for lunch, I send them up to 25th Street, but they've cut the hours, they've cut the days and they're not hiring any more docents, you know? I mean, they've made it really tough to be able to even want to help or volunteer for the people up on 25th Street. I mean, crime anything, something's got to change. If Damon wants, I mean, if you guys want anything, any advice, ask me. I can tell you what practically.
I don't think the people on Zoom can hear you when you're talking that way.
All right. But anyway, Ogden's Union Station is a jewel of Ogden. Those are the guns, the cars, the railroad equipment, I mean, they're worth millions and the Browning firearms are irreplaceable. So, I mean, let's don't cheapen it. Have a good one.
You too, thank you. Anybody else here like to make a comment? Hello?
Steve Jones, Ogden resident. And thank you for the good news tonight. I think it was a very good decision to, you know, delay the framework, a little bit of conservative action, a little bit of very careful consideration will end up getting us a better project product in the future. And, you know, one of the things that I'd advise us to use this time for is look at what guardrails really need to be added to that that framework so that we do end up getting a solid plan in place for something that we can live with for many, many years in the future. So thanks again.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm trying not to look at anybody in particular so you don't think I'm giving you any pressure, no pressure.
Al Jones, City Curmudgeon. I've got a couple of things, I'll try and whip through them real quick. Again, I think you all know that I am a huge supporter of the museums and extremely careful planning of the Union Station Campus. This will impact the future of Ogden forever. And so I always urge extreme conservatism in the planning process to make sure that that's done right. On other points, yeah, I've drove down Harrison the other day. Our improvement of our public transportation system with OGX, yeah, not a fan. The thing down the center of the street to block access, yeah, I don't know how we managed to let them do that. And again, we need to always be working on improving our public transportation system. We're going into the new future. We need to start working on getting some electric charging stations set up around the city and think about how that's going to go. And I want to completely emphasize Councilman Lopez's comments early about proper planning in the future. We really do need to figure out how to get our residents to have equity in our city. We, it's a complex issue, it takes a lot of thought and foresight, but we really do need to figure out how and where we need to encourage our investment in our citizens. I just flat-out developers coming in and just sucking all the money out of the out of the our economy and shipping it off to wherever they ship it off to is just not a vibrant scenario for the future. And so with that, I'll see you maybe next week. Sorry, sorry, I've been gone for so long.
Oh, yeah, we missed you. Yeah, we missed you. Okay, well, we can go online with Heath Sato. Oh, so sorry. Will you come in?
Are you an online person or?
Okay, come on.
I will be very brief.
Yeah, just let me know if you have something you'd like to say. Just one second, okay, Heath, I'm sorry.
DS Anderson, Ogden citizen. Just real briefly, a question for the council at large and incoming administration. Progress implies a goal towards something. So what exactly is that that you guys are striving for in this drive program? What is your end game? What's your goal? Growth for the sake of growth is not progress. Hyper-dense stuff, yes, we need some. Too much will be too much. And just a brief, brief thing, meaningful consideration from your citizenry will offset future need to remediate mistakes you will make as a governing body. And I'll close and I'm going to repeat myself, some actions cannot be undone. So step wisely. If you want my advice, just consult your local Ogden poet and itinerant retired botanist and I will happily provide you with some insights. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, come on up.
Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. Since we're talking about Union Station, I wanted to again follow up about connecting with people and meeting community where they are. There's a whole lot of things being pulled together for public sessions, for community engagement that are conflict with a whole lot of things, like, for example, things for our local election process, there was a direct conflict with that one. And meeting people on the weekend because it's really hard for people who work nine-to-fives or do houses where both parents work and one of them works a different shift. If we really and truly want to make sure that we're getting that feedback, where I'd highly encourage you to continue to request from the company that they open up their process to meet more people where they are. Thank you.
Linda Sanchez, I want to give you guys a big hand. A second week, the work session and this session, I love it. I love the answers, I love the questions, I love the interaction. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'm okay with the format that you guys used a few weeks ago, online, back and forth, because I think that was kind of changed things up a little bit. And they also say the last thing said is the first thing remembered. So if you're always giving Heath the the last word, then he's the first thing remembered. Do you really want to go to bed with that?
You have to set your name for the record.
So the dynamic that I see is I'm pleased with the progress. Jefferson Avenue Town Homes, we haven't, let's go to the homeowners association and say, what did we do right? What did we do wrong? When you had an abandonment of a developer and the sidewalks are still broken, even though we spent a million dollars of HUD money to put in the curb gutter sidewalk, roadway tree planting and lighting, 20 years later, they're still shattered because the developer drove across them and we didn't go against his insurance. We didn't say, hey, you need to replace these sidewalks. And then intermittently throughout the spaces of that entire beautiful campaign where both city council and administration, if we remember the past administration, there was quite a little bit of headbutting. This was the one place that there was such a symphonic chorus of harmony that was absolutely amazing. And yet we just pour patches of white concrete instead of the dye pack of gray. I mean, those types of things is the investment that needs to say, if HUD, we asked the rest of the nation, you go without so we can have, we probably ought to give a little bit more care to those trust efforts. Same thing with the BRT, if there's things that can improve, we can go to Provo and say, what do you guys like and not liking about your BRT route? How can we then improve ours, the same in that dynamic? The Union Station is essentially a billboard. You guys know what billboards and campaign signs are in that little triangle that you can't be within. I think the same thing with the Union Station. It shows so much encroachment, no, there should be the triangle that just comes right out that says, don't build front or back within this triangle. So when you come and you just see Ogden's billboard, we turn to, we turn 100 next year with that building. We turn 100 with the Egyptian Theater, we turn 100 with the Desert Gym, we turn 100 with the First Baptist Church. What are we doing to celebrate the 125th, the 1924, the 100th anniversary? And then I'd like to actually do a special request that even though Councilmember Lopez is stepping down, that we still say, oh, he's the special envoy for Ogden for the America 125. Just over half the states of America were requested to be a part of that. And I think that, yes, there still can be a council representation there, but we ask them and say, please, we got this guy, let's let's put him to work. Kritchlow, years ago, from North Ogden, was retired and he says, I thought I was retired, but I ended up retreaded. So let's retread him, keep him on the, keep him on that America 125. Thank you.
And I don't think you said your name, Travis Pate.
Okay, yeah, Travis Pate.
Good luck, good luck with that, Travis.
Yeah, I know. We'll have to ask Councilmember Lopez about that, yeah. Anybody else here? Okay, let's go on. I'm so sorry, Heath, please go ahead, maybe next time I'll let you go first.
Heath Sato, Ogden resident, here with the last word.
Okay. It's, yeah, there's like a saying. It's, yeah, there's like a saying, right?
I really do appreciate the thoughtful discussion that we've had tonight, and from the council to the citizens that took the time to speak. Thanks for the clarification about the city being the one to ask for the bike shop, coffee shop. And it really does look like a real improvement to what we have there, so I'll look forward to seeing that done. I do have to wonder, sarcasm is a head, I do have to wonder if the developer knows that many around here just get the city to buy the property for them, then hand it right over to a developer the same year, like the way we bought the land for Rooster's B Street and so many other developments around the city. They may not be connected in the right ways, though. They also may not know we like to pay developers to build their own parking and other infrastructure. That is, if you're tight with the right people in our government, I guess. So, somebody should wise them up. And again, kudos to them for buying most of their own land, creating their own parking. I want you all to note that good developers will work here on their own time if you don't make it so hard for anyone that isn't part of the inside crowd. And when I say you, it's a general term, I don't mean the council. So I do have some mixed feelings about giving the rest of our land away in that area to that developer, but I'm perfectly happy to see that small chunk of road vacated, no matter what it's used for. That said, just last meeting, we heard the mayor and Councilmember White in particular get pretty worked up about what a great deal the wildlife rescue center got using city property for free for a number of years. So my final word is, I have to ask, is it just that we only consider development to be a positive thing now for our community? The only thing worthy of transferring land to? I mean, was the Marshall White Center our last effort where we could give up just a little bit of property for a public good? Just something to think about. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments online? Okay, anybody like to make any comments about the comments? Or we just go to our comments?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify my comments. And that is, is I was worked up about the rehab or the refuge center, only because they had gotten free rent for 12 years and that other nonprofits had not done that. So that's, there was a fairness to my comments, so.
Okay, any comments from the administration?
Thank you, Chair Chaburka. I do have a couple comments. I did want to address some concerns at 14425th Street, but before I do, I did want to acknowledge our city employees who are here today, the staff people, and especially the Planning Division who made presentations tonight. They did an excellent job, very thorough, and I wanted to say that their, their hard work and their, their expertise and their attention to detail is really indicative of so many of our city employees and all the, the hard work and just the huge expertise that we have among our staff. And I wanted to especially just, again, tonight, just think we have our city comptroller here, we have department directors, we have business development, we have our city recorder, of course, we have a member of our IT staff was here just to back up in case we had any issues, because we were, we were down a couple of the council experts. And so just a lot of effort and time that goes into these meetings, I wanted to acknowledge that and give my thanks. And also to the public who was here to speak as well, it's a really healthy dialogue. I did want to make a couple comments about 14424th Street. We've had some concerns from the public, and the administration shares those concerns very much. We've been actively engaged with that project for the last several months, most notably our fire marshal and our building, our building official. And we are now kind of on a two-track route, where they have some deadlines this Friday to get some updated plans back, but we also served a notice and order today for a dangerous building, and so that's public. And we are gonna be working with them. They have another project on 12th Street that recently did have the stop-work order removed, so we were happy to see that. And we're gonna be continuing to work with them on that track as well, and hope we see some progress on 25th Street. But that's where we're at, but we do share the concerns that have been raised, and that's where we're at as of today.
Thanks so much for that update. What does that mean, a dangerous building notice?
It's, it just starts in, you know, a process, it's just one route that we're gonna take it. It's a possible route that can lead to some additional enforcement action, but you just have to start with that. It's a part of our, you know, it's in our city code. We've, we've used it as a tool in the past, we've been successful to help, you know, ultimately work with owners of buildings that are in danger of, you know, that are, you know, becoming dangerous buildings, the condition that they're in. And so it's a tool that we have to utilize to hopefully continue to work with this developer and get a result that's the best, in the best interest of the city.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Maria. Can you tell me, what's the timeline associated with that step and process?
With, so as I said, we have a deadline of this week, but, you know, we'll continue to work with the developer if we, we do that. But it's, you know, it's a long, it can be, you know, there's a lot of steps that need to be taken along the way, so can't, you know, but we'll be continuing to watch the building and make sure that it's, you know, that it's, it's safe and in the condition that it's in. But there's, there's a number of steps that have to be taken, so I don't have a direct timeline, but I do feel like we're on a two-track process, so we're gonna continue to be open and really hope that we have a solution, you know, with a developer coming in the near future.
Is there anything we can do for added security there that, I did see the camera in the back, but those are kind of famous for being ignored, too. So I do worry with the temperatures dropping that there is an added risk.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be keeping an eye on that, the safety of the building and, you know, making sure that we're, that the fire marshal is out there inspecting in our building and our code enforcement is out there inspecting as well.
Is there any, any chance for security on site?
Yeah, there could be, that is definitely an option that we have, and we're reevaluating that right now.
Thanks.
Any other comments from council members?
Okay, I just, I wanna say that I had a really fun, fun night last night. I flew in into the airport in Salt Lake. I was able to get on a tracks line, then on a frontrunner, and then actually onto OGX last night, and walked home. And in the, it was, it was, it was a two-hour trip, but it would have been a two-hour trip if somebody had to come down and pick me up and then, and come back. And so I just, I encourage people to try it, try it out. You can ride the OGX for free. It was, it was later at night, but everybody was very pleasant and just, it was a really fun experience. So I just encourage people to try to get out and, and try it out.
Agreed, agreed. I've used it several times and it's really enjoyable. Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn?
All right. Motion from Councilmember Nadolski, and a second by Councilmember Hire to adjourn on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you all so much for coming.